Seven o'clock. All right. Seeing that at seven on the dot, welcome to the June 11th, 2024, last school board meeting of the school year. Can I have a roll call, please?
Maggie Larson.
Here.
Todd Marsh.
Here.
Carrie Clark.
Here.
Sarah Bryan-Hart.
Here.
Crystal D. St. Croix.
Here.
Marcia Brown.
Here.
Barbara Wentworth.
Excused.
Gemma Sodadi.
All right. We'd like to invite some people up.
You want to do the pledge first?
Yes, but we're going to invite our...
Yeah, I'm so pleased that we have three of our wonderful female athletes here tonight. I'm going to invite up Ms. Dakota Hall and Ms. Abby Brown, who are Seacoast Champions for track, and also Cyia McKay to come up and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Just right here.
Thank you. It's nice to see you here tonight. I'm glad you came.
Everyone can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask our two middle school students to stay up here.
Thank you.
So you can have a seat. You'll come up later. So, and I'm going to invite up the athletic director here, Steve. Good to see you. And when I heard that Dakota and Abby won a Seacoast track and field event, and I'm going to make sure I have this right, who does the shot put? I think it's, yeah, you.
Dakota.
Yeah, Dakota, she does the shot put, and I think the high jump is Abby Brown, correct? And I was just so impressed that I wanted to invite you to the school board meeting so that you could be recognized, because I really value individual sports, not that team sports are important, but it's you competing against others, and it rests solely on you. So all the pressure is on you. And when I found out you were Seacoast Champions, I thought, you ought to come here, we're going to recognize you. So with that said, I invited our athletic director here to say a few words about you and how you did this year, and so pleased that all of you came out tonight. So I'm so happy. Congratulations, and you're doing great things, and I know you're going to do great things in the future as well, not only in sports, but also academically. So, welcome.
All right, so as the athletic director at the middle school and the high school, as well as the high school track and field coach, I was super proud and impressed of these two athletes. Abby, she won the Seacoast High Jump Championship, and what is amazing about that is she probably practiced it six times all year, because we just started, we just ordered all the middle school equipment, and the high jump championship hasn't come in yet, so they got to come and practice with the high school team a few times, but not nearly as much as they will in the next few years. But Abby jumped four feet, four inches, and that was not even her personal best, and she still won the meet. So we're extremely happy with Abby. And Abby's an eighth grader and will be an incoming freshman, well, now she's a freshman now, because...
That's right.
She graduated yesterday. And Dakota is a seventh grader. You know, Dakota won the shot put. What's amazing about Dakota, track is a game of inches, like a lot of times the places are decided by just a couple inches here or there. Dakota won the Seacoast Championship by five feet from the second thrower. She threw 26 feet, over 26 feet, and the next girl threw 21 feet. And like I said, once again, we're extremely excited to have both these student athletes come up in our program, and they represent Summersworth amazingly. Just, we're absolutely super proud of them, you know, we're trying to promote them all over the place. It's just, it's just amazing, and we, you know, we're looking for bright things from the future for these guys. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Great job. Okay.
Where are they going?
We can, yes, absolutely. Board member Brown.
Where are you guys going? Because you get to hear accolades from the rest of the board here. So I don't know if you remember that I do volunteer for the track, so I am elated to see middle schoolers doing so well. I can't wait to get you on the high school program, as Steve can attest. So I just want to start off the congratulations that you're doing athletically very well. I presume you're also doing very well academically, and I'm so proud that you are just exemplifying what Summersworth is all about. So just want to say thank you, thank you again.
Yeah, I just want to pay you back on that and say congratulations to you girls. That's amazing. Good job. I know that we don't here at Summersworth have all the equipment that you need, but you did a great job at, you know, finding your way and still conquering. We're working on that equipment, working on getting more. Yeah, so, okay, well, congratulations.
Yeah, I also just want to say congratulations. I know Summersworth has a legacy for its football teams, and so it's beautiful to see two young ladies on the track team making a name for themselves and going strong, representing. So congratulations.
I just think it's so cool. Middle school is such a weird time in people's lives, and like, you two have accomplished so much while also just going through middle, like, I barely remember middle school, so I am so proud of people who, like, look, you've done such amazing things already just by surviving middle school, and then like also adding this accomplishment onto it, it's pretty awesome. So congratulations.
I just want to congratulate both of you. I know you both personally, but you guys have accomplished so much, so keep up the great work, guys, okay?
You hopefully already know how proud I am of you as just a parent and just seeing you, and those long track meets, they are long, all, it is hours, and these students, I am like beaming at these meets, because you do so well, you're such good, you have such great sportsmanship, patience, endurance, and I am like incredibly proud to be like a parent and to be a school board chair. I'm like, that's us, that Summersworth. Look at them go, and they're like, you know, they're like, where do you practice? I'm like, we don't have a track, and we are doing amazing. So thank you for being such model hilltoppers. This, on behalf of the school board, we are incredibly proud of you and have a great summer. Thank you.
Now you can sit down. I'm going to, now I'm going to invite up Ms. Cyia McKay, and Steve, if you can come as well. Cyia, I sent an email to her, as well as the other two young ladies, and was just so impressed with her winning the NHIA Division III High Jump, and she's a champion, which is outstanding. And also, she was a key member on the volleyball team. I went to a lot of the meets and just came up short in the finals, and I did predict that Summersworth Hilltoppers is going to take it next year with Cyia on the team and all the other wonderful young women on that team. So welcome. Steve, if you could say a few words about Cyia, that would be greatly appreciated.
No, absolutely. So this is Cyia's second year competing in track and field, and this is Cyia's second year qualifying for the New England Championship. She was this year's Division III High Jump Champion. Then she went on and placed fifth in the state at the meet of champions, and then she, this past weekend, she competed at the New England's at UNH. It poured when she jumped, so we're not going to talk about that. But, you know, extremely proud of everything Cyia's accomplished, like, and like we said, like literally, this is her junior year, she did not do track as a freshman. She came out as a sophomore last year and has been to the New England's two years in a row, which means she's one of the top six in her event in the state of New Hampshire. And that, just from having gymnastics background, you know, like you just talked about with volleyball, she was this year's Play of the Year in Division III. She's a very well-rounded student, she's in National Honor Society, and, you know, we could sing her praises all day, but I'm sure, you know, you guys have seen them in...
Oh, it's okay. Sing her praises.
Yeah, yeah. We're televised, keep going.
So, thank you, and any words? I know you have some words.
Cy, I am so proud of you, and full disclosure, I've been working with Cy on the high jump, and it's just been such a tremendous honor for me to help an athlete like you. I know Steve didn't want to talk about Saturday and the rainstorm, but I do want to mention it, because it illustrated in the adversity of your cluster of jumpers having to jump in a rain squall that was pelting sheets of puddling rain on the surface, that while Steve and I were going in, you know, Papa Bear mode, Mama Bear mode, what can we appeal? You know, discretion is not appealable, a rule is appealable, but anyway, you, in comparison, maintained your cool, maintained your poise, and your sportsmanship was just exemplary. And I just want to, I know that you were humble about how well-adjusted you were compared to me on that day of not being given the same fair conditions to jump in, but I just, I want to just bring that out, because it just illustrated just what a beautiful soul you are, and, you know, congratulations on, you know, the accolades of being recognized today, too. Thank you.
Cy, I'm a huge fan of yours, I know. Like, you've done so much. I think about back in your gymnastics days of all coming in with like your sores on your hands, and then going into volleyball, and all the athletics that you do, and you do them so well, and your future is so bright. Like, keep your head up and keep going. I'm super proud of you.
So the first word that comes to mind is wow. You are amazing. Great job. Keep up the great work, and congratulations.
You know, I keep thinking about what the superintendent said about how individual sports are so worthy of being recognized as well, and it's just such a testament to you of your ability to accomplish your goals in high school as a student, but also in individualized sports. It's such a mental thing, and I don't know, I'm just, it's amazing. I'm really proud of you, and congratulations, and Summersworth is proud, and it's awesome.
Yeah, I also just want to say congratulations. I also did high jump as well when I was at the middle school, and I think it's a unique sport in that it's a sport where you're jumping into something you actually aren't like looking, where you're leaping, and jumping backwards, and I don't think people talk a lot about vulnerability when you talk about sports, but in a way, self-independent sports where you're competing by yourself, it takes a lot of risk to put yourself out there in these competitions, so it's incredible what you've done, and just congratulations again.
Do you feel the whole city like backing you? Because this board absolutely does like more than proud, more than just, you know, I know you're like, we're humble with some things, but we're so proud to be able to do this, you know, to be able to explain how much support and admiration for you, and how much we will just, as this board, that's what we're supposed, you know, that's kind of our charge, is to be able to support our students and our school community, and you're a model hilltopper. I think maybe that you've already gotten that award as well, but, so, just hopefully know that and pay it forward. I know you do already, Cyia, and I know this was probably like the last thing you want to say, everyone talking to you how amazing you are. Come back next meeting, bring some friends, we will do that as well, but we are so proud, and the community is proud, and you have the backing of our school board, so thank you.
Tough acts to follow there, I tell you. I'm going to invite up Ms. Amy Pillsbury. She's our special education coordinator, and she was recently recognized as an emerging leader in the Seacoast region. If you want to come up with your son and your husband, that's great, and you can introduce them to us. No, he wants to sit back there? So I'm going to read to you a letter that was provided to me from the New Hampshire Association of Special Education Administrators on behalf of Amy. It says, and this is from the executive director, it says, "Congratulations on being nominated as a New Hampshire Association of Special Education Administrators, emerging leader representing the Seacoast region. On behalf of the association, we want to thank you for the dedication and leadership you have demonstrated to your educational community. A priority for our organization is to support the pipeline of new leaders, and we look forward to recognizing you at our June 14, 2024 monthly membership meeting." Amy came to me and says, "Do you mind if I go to this?" Of course, go to this, because I can't go to some of the training on that day. I said, "Go get your award." "At this meeting, we will be celebrating 20 years of the association as a nonprofit professional organization and paying tribute to special education ministers, past, present, and future." So, and the rest of it's just logistics for the meeting, but Amy, I'm so proud of you. I enjoyed working with you this year, and you are emerging leader, you're a bright star, and I wish you great success in the future, so congratulations on this nice award that you received. Thank you. If anyone wants to say a few words, or we're all set?
No, I mean, this is incredible. Yeah, go ahead, Sarah.
I mean, we've worked professionally in many circumstances, and I know, you know, and not only from school board, but just in the educational community, and it's such a cool thing, like, I've looked into special administration, it's a rough thing to do, and it's a lot of work, and the job of a special education administrator is really, really hard, and so thank you for doing that for us, and for even doing it in other places that make my life easier. But you've been a valued colleague, and I think this is incredible, so congratulations.
I have to say, this is amazing. Great job. Keep up the great work. You're showing great leadership, and congratulations.
I was just going to say, this is why I am so proud to be on the school board, it's because of all the support that we have, and the exemplary is the word to use today, of the teachers as well and staff, and so I'm just so happy for you, for actually being recognized for all of your hard work. So, thank you.
I want to thank you for choosing education as one of your life purposes, and including students with unique needs, so thank you.
We are so lucky to have you in our district. I think we understand that, we've heard, we've heard a lot, you know, this year was difficult, you went into a role that was increasing, we have increasing needs in Summersworth, and I think that there's such purpose in work, but there's also such purpose in recognizing our people, and recognizing with pride, and recognizing with kind of a genuine gratitude, and hopefully you feel that today, and more so on the 14th. And please let us know how it goes and update the board. And yep, board member Wentworth, a little late to the...
A little late to the party. I was at another sports event, but I just really quickly, I know I kind of missed the shout out for Abby and Cyia, but because I know both of you, I'm just so proud of you girls, and this is so amazing, and congratulations, and congratulations as well, Amy.
And she's also congratulating Dakota as well.
Dakota. Shot put. Over here. Yep. All right, come in.
Yes.
So one more. Yep.
All right.
And, yeah, can we dismiss people?
Yeah, folks can leave, that's fine.
Yes.
I'm sure students...
We'll give them time.
I'm sure the students have better things to do. Summer is officially here, and...
Yep. First day of summer vacation.
Take care, everyone.
Be safe, be healthy. Okay, I'm going to take the fuzz off of you here.
Oh, did I have a fuzzy?
No, I may have bumped it.
Probably got it from my cat.
Be safe, have a great summer, see you around.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye. I didn't see John all the way back there.
That's all right. That's good.
Okay, that was lovely. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you to our people. All right, we'll move on to the agenda item number one, any comments by visitors? I don't believe there are any, any initial comments by board members this evening? No? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Was everyone able to read the consent calendar, and do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as adopted, as presented?
Presented. You have a motion from Brown...
Yes.
...to adopt the consent calendar as presented in our packet. Thank you.
Second.
Right. The only discussion about the student enrollment, just because I wanted to make sure, I think that, let's keep this on our radar to be able to kind of look at student enrollment and maybe pair with the city about looking at enrollment and data of school-aged children in Summersworth, and kind of do a little bit of a concerted effort to be able to be on top of that. I know, I've seen, I met with a lot of young families at the Pines for a community picnic, and I was like, it looks like there's a growth in that area, so to be prepared with incoming kindergarten, as well as other grades, I think enrollment should be on our, kind of our radar. Yep.
We used to pay as a district to an organization called Nezdeck that would do enrollment projections for us, and we haven't done that in a few years. I think 2018 was the last time we did it, so maybe that's something the board might want to look into doing again.
That'd be great. Yep, make a note on that. Thank you. All right, all in favor of the consent calendar adoption, say aye?
Aye.
All right, it's adopted. Moving to reports, I don't believe there are many this evening. Our student representatives, have a great summer. They're done, last day of school. So we'll move with our superintendent's report.
I have just one item. Tonight's my last official board meeting, and I just wanted to share with you some parting remarks. I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the school district this year. Our students finished their last day today, and I'm so happy they made it through the school year safe and sound. Always weighs heavily on my mind as a superintendent, and after I got the notice from the bus that the last bus cleared, I went, huh. That made me feel really good. The work here has been some of the most challenging and some of the most rewarding in my career, and that's why they call it work, I guess. I learned the work-life of an interim superintendent is much different than a permanent superintendent. There are some differences. I want to talk a little bit about your students. I found them to be very kind, courteous, respectful to me. They are diverse and accept individual differences. That's stellar about them. I just, I've worked in a lot of districts, and it just comes naturally here for our students because of the diversity of this community. I thoroughly enjoy taking, talking with them, I'm sorry, in classrooms, in the halls, at lunch, and at events. Summersworth has some of the best students I've ever worked with, I'm being totally honest with you, some of the best I've ever worked with, and it's nice to go out with that high. I wish them all the best. You are also blessed to have great faculty, staff, administrators, central office staff, and volunteers. The staff that I've interacted with care deeply about our students and are extremely dedicated people. When I think of your employees, I remember Maslow's hierarchy of needs theory. When I was in school, I always wondered, when am I going to use this? And I've used it a lot, actually, but I'm going to use it tonight. Your employees put students physiological, which is food, and, you know, and safety, and just safe environments, safety and security, love and belonging, and self-esteem needs first. They really focus on that. This focus enhances learning, as well as students' social and emotional well-being. Your employees are laser-focused on supporting your students achieve self-actualization by including teaching ethics and what is morally acceptable. Those, that's what gets you to self-actualization, folks, and also, your employees promote student creativity, acceptance, and their inner potential, which I admire greatly. I have enjoyed working with all school board members on committees and at various board meetings. You have been very supportive of me, and I know that will continue with John Shea, your new superintendent. This is, this time is really bittersweet for me. I will miss working here. I hope I've made a difference in a short period of time and left things better than when I arrived. So my friends, thank you all, and God bless the Summersworth School District. Thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Do you want to suspend rules?
Yes, please.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So this, I had this written up on my notes. I wrote notes today, people, I'm so proud of myself. Lou, I wanted to take a minute to thank you for coming in during this time. It was a tumultuous time, it was a hard time, and it was not easy, so I wanted to say thank you for stepping up and stepping in and doing the best you can and managing the ship, and, you know, I could see a difference when you came on, and I could see everyone like lifting up and feeling a breath of fresh air coming on, so thank you for your time. I know it was hard, I know it was challenging, but you did a great job, and I'm very appreciative.
Thank you.
Down the line? Okay. Go down the line.
I don't know, this is hard, Lou. This is my first time being on the board, and you being a leader was amazing. You've definitely showed me what I needed to know. You're a great person. It's bittersweet, because I hate to see you go.
Thank you.
But best of luck to you.
Thank you.
You know, I've only known you a short time.
Is your microphone on?
No, I don't. Okay. Now I'm recorded. No, I've only known you a short time, but, one, thanks for the advice, and thanks for being a model of a leader, that as a special education professional, knowing like the road you have been on professionally, it's been inspiring to me and helped me look at my own career and leadership in a different way, so I really appreciate that. And I kind of see you as, like, in my mind, there's this like league of extraordinary superintendents that like go around and like help out districts in need, like Mike Powers and Kevin Murphy, and you, Ray at Lou, like, all of these wonderful people that show up just when we need them, and I think, you know, I imagine you as one of them, and I know you are. So thanks for letting me get to know you a little bit, and for being here and showing me what this was all about in a way. Like, you're the first superintendent I've worked with on any school board, but also, I don't know, a good, great working partnership here, but also just a great example of leadership in my life, so I'm really grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Can I go next? My microphone is on.
Yes.
And I too envision Lou with a little bit of a Superman cape on, but I do want to echo your leadership, because you came in a time when SAU 56 was in need, and although we knew from our gut feeling which path we needed to go to, you were a beacon of light that illuminated that path with clarity, and I so appreciate that quality of you, your steady-handedness, your fearlessness in vetting, and that's one thing that I appreciate in being on boards, is the airing and vetting of viewpoints, because ultimately, when you have all those viewpoints and stakeholders at a table, you come out with a better policy project, or product. And I appreciated your ability to hold that dialogue with people, to vet all sides. So, wholeheartedly thank you for taking us on, when you may not, you know, have wanted to, but I so, so appreciate that the universe provided you with us, and you accepted at the time that we needed you. So heartfelt thanks, and I hope that you take some time off and fuel yourself. I hear you're going on a little bit of a vacation, so I hope you truly disconnect and refuel, because I feel like we've taken a lot, and thank you.
Oh, Lou. Yeah, so what a journey, what a fun, fabulous, non-stop ride of excitement it has been since you said yes to being here. You know, it has, I feel like you, at least for me, this is my second term, yep, second term being on the board, and for me, I've only had one certain kind of leadership, and then you came in and showed me a different kind of leadership, and the inclusivity, the transparency, the inclusion that I felt as a board member is something I've never experienced before, and from what I hear, was not present. And that is so like monumental, and in me feeling, not only that I can be a part of a board and make a difference, but that I can be in the presence of what I'm making a difference for, that I can be in the schools, and I can remember the first day, and we were, I think Ms. Chairperson Larson and someone else, we were, like, you came in and played some fun videos, and like, it was all this, like, all the staff from like every building, and I was like, you know what, here's someone who is like in the trenches with us, who has not separated themselves to be apart from, instead, I felt like you were very much a part of. And this has been a crazy, wild ride, and I am also, I would say, a crazy, wild board person, and I felt like you have always dealt with my really passionate antics in a great way, and I will certainly have a sifter later on for you.
That's funny. So I am crazy and passionate, too. In all seriousness, I, so Superintendent Lou, you came in, and I'll echo really what many have already said, that you came in during a complicated and challenging time, and to use the ship analogy, I think, you know, there's an old saying, I'm probably butchering it a little bit... butchering it a little bit, but you know, anyone can steer a ship when the waters are calm. And they weren't when you came in. And so it takes a true sailor or a true navigator to recognize that and to sail to calmer waters, right? And that took skill, it took effort, it took passion for what you do. I, I appreciate the passion you have, I appreciate, I think in some, the pragmatism at times too, right? And, and you, you have made a difference in your steady leadership and when I say steady, I don't mean that in sort of a flat sort of, you know, not making any mistakes mode way, but I think you've helped lead us forward. And isn't that what we all want to do, right? To leave it in, in better hands and to, to toss that, that, that stick or whatever you call it, to go along with the baton, thank you, to the next person and off and running. So I'm glad I got to know you a little bit. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Obviously, I'm also new. But Lou, I remember hearing way before I was on the board, you know, that the board had found new interim person, you know, through the grapevine and I thought, wow, it's going to take, who, who is this person? Who would sign up for a job like that, knowing it's not permanent and knowing they're walking right into conflict? Yeah. And when I met you as a incoming board member, I was stunned in, in your character and your, your spirit and your gentility and humility and respect, not just for me as an incoming board member who has no experience, younger than most, don't have a child in the school district and you treated me like any other member of this team. You've been patient, you've been kind. And then I, I remember the first board meeting I came to and one of the things you were bringing up was that you were really passionate that the band had uniforms. And as an artist myself who went to these schools that didn't have a lot for the arts, I thought, wow, this, this guy's here for one year, like he could just skate by, just bridge the gap to the next person. You didn't have to go above and beyond, you just had to like smooth it over till, till things healed. And I really have felt, Lou, that you have just gone so much further than anyone probably expected in terms of where we've come from. And it's just been a pleasure getting to know you and you've taught me a lot about how this city can run and how we could make it even better. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. It feels good to me that I'm still teaching. So, anyway, thank you for the kind words, everyone.
I mean, what a, what a board, Mr. Kuzinski. What a, what a, what a purpose, what a, what a purpose. And we can't control what happens, right? But we can control how we respond to it and with love and purpose and that fulfillment and respect and kindness and that kind of come back two tenfold in your life and your family. And thank you, with our gratitude, you know, it was something that maybe will, to reflect, you know, it was such meaningful work and hard work and I'm very grateful for all of you and I'm very grateful that in your tenure, you get this wonderful board to kind of be here to support you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Stand up. I know, no one's here, but we're standing up. All right. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
We're just in the middle of the meeting, but I don't believe we have a business administrators' report this evening. So, all right, okay, and no city council update this evening. It was suspending rules to be able to speak, but we'll just, oh, I don't think we have to make a motion to go back. We're, we're just going to follow along. Agenda item 4.5 was a before-after-school ad hoc committee update and the YMCA. For the summer, I would like to continue the ad hoc after-school committee to get the data and kind of keep a close eye on the transition to the YMCA for enrollments and support. So currently, it is a, a school board member, Marsh, and Counselor Cameron, who's also the chair of the recreation committee, you know, for the city of Summersworth, and parents, you know, that, you know, community members. There's a school board member also that would like to go and maybe a city council representative or anyone else, just to publicly put it out there. We're, we'll look for a meeting to meet during the summer and look at numbers, enrollments, kind of figures and kind of keep on top of that transition because it's clear that Summersworth citizens, elected, you know, elected officials, families support the wellbeing of, of our students and our kids. So we want to be able to kind of, I know summer's kind of the off-season, but to be able to kind of keep an eye on it and be supportive and be mindful of the transition and do what we can. Will we have anyone in, on staff to, to look over that transition? I don't know if the, Cody will still be on staff for the, just to the rest of the month, perhaps? Okay, so maybe...
Yeah, we, I asked him to be available to help.
To, to the end of June, I think, right? Okay, so maybe towards the end of June.
The program ended today, so I don't think Cody goes after today.
Oh.
I, I said, I think Cody only went till the end of S Y C, which was today.
Oh, was it only today? Was...
But I'm sure, I mean, I can reach out to him.
Okay. Well, we'll look at whoever else to be able to help, you know, help with the transition, help with eyes on seeing our, you know, what their enrollments are for the YMCA and kind of just kind of keeping an eye over the summer. So I wanted to give an update for that. And that's it. Standing committees, there's been no standing committee updates. I would encourage kind of take a break and then look at your schedule for next year and reach out to me with any committee assignments or changes over the summer before August and we'll kind of look at that, you know, but no, no rush. Eyes on 30 Committee, remember, Sodadi, is anything?
We haven't met since the last meeting.
So, okay, great. There's no presentation, there are no policies since we don't like to have those linger. There is no new business, there's no old business and our next meeting day is August 13th, 2024, here at City Hall. We would like to schedule a board member retreat for the, for early August, but to be, to be determined. That would not be a full day, it would be a half a day somewhere in our city, most likely. Comments by visitors? Any comments by visitors this evening? Comments by board members? Board Member Clark?
I feel like I've spoken a lot today. Apologize. I wanted to congratulate the seniors on their great graduation. There were so many great speeches, so much music, singing, the band. I'm so proud of all of these students and what they did. And every year I cry, I didn't have a student that was graduating this year, I'm like, I'm crying. Because you see these kids like grow up and you're like, they're on their way and they're doing amazing things. And I also want to congratulate the eighth graders who graduated yesterday, right? Nina, you looking at me like, I don't know. Okay. So that's amazing, going into freshman year, it's exciting. And then the rest of the school left today and I saw so many kids over at the ice cream shop. It was so, it was so fun. Yeah, it's, it's just great to see all the kids moving on and this is why we do this. We are here, this is why I'm here, is to, you know, help the kids and see them grow and flourish and do amazing things with their lives. And I also want to thank the teachers for all that they did this past year. I know it was hard and they did amazing, the staff, the maintenance, the, all, everyone, great job. And then my last was thank you to Lou. By all means, too, but I'll thank you again, Lou. But that is it. Thanks, guys.
Anything else over here? All right, anything over here? We're all set. Healthy, safe, happy summer to everyone. Are you, any other closing comments by anyone? Nope. Yep. Congratulations, Class of 2024. Class of 2028 has a certain ring to it. It was, I handed out 87 diplomas on Friday and the best thing I could do is just kind of look at everyone, smile and breathe, right? You know, the small things. We support as much as we can, but we, this is not it, our families and caretakers and teachers and staff and everyone else there. This is an early release summer, so please take care. We are grateful for you. And is there anything else from the board before we go into non-public? It's quiet. Everything seems very peaceful in time for June. Yep. With that, agenda item 13, we do have a non-public for 91A 32A to C. Do we have a motion for that? Non-public on your agenda? Anyone? I can give it to you. No rush.
I make a motion that we go into non-public pursuant to the authority of RSA 91A 3, Roman 2, subparts little A through C.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Oh, that was D St. Croix, okay. Um, roll call, please.
Maggie Larson?
Yes.
Todd Marsh? Carrie Clark?
Yes.
Sarah O'Brien-Hart?
Yes.
Crystal D St. Croix?
Yes.
Marsha Brown?
Yes.
Barbara Wentworth?
Yes.
Gemma Sodadi?
Should John stay? I don't know. Was it going to affect him or no? No, he's not. Okay. We'll say.
Thank you, John.
No, I mean...